Stehenville City Council meeting to order. We have a, we do have a quorum. We're gonna, the item for the council meeting is approve the, approve a tax rate for the year 2020. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a, have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we set the property tax rate and have it be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .455 cents per hundred, which is effectively a 4.67% increase in the tax rate.
Have a motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Ricky. Further discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is, does this have to be a roll call?
Yes.
Has to be a roll call, I'm sorry. I apologize. Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Yes.
Place seven.
Aye.
Place eight.
Aye.
Yeah, I must vote. Since that's the only item on our agenda, I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting, and we'll convene directly into a, two committee meetings. I'm just gonna mention that we'll be here for the personnel committee, and then several of us will have to leave right after the personnel committee. And at that point, Gerald Cook will take over the agenda. Personal committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We call the personnel committee meeting to order. There's been a lot of discussion about the COLA raises for our retirees, and so I believe Monica has asked for a representative from TMRS to join us. To give us a presentation on that.
While we're waiting for TMRS to be brought up online, we give you this handout, and basically what it is, is the top page is our city plan. We have a cost of living adjustment fact sheet. Page four is the plan change study that talks about the different rates based upon the different proposals. Page five is what our projections would look like with a 70% recurring. Page six is if we were to do a ad hoc just one time. Page seven is what it would look like if a 70% ad hoc was done annually for the next 10 years. And then page eight is a 30% ad hoc one time. Page nine is an annual 30% ad hoc. And then on page 10, I've done some examples of a cost of living adjustment calculation. If it was like a 2% CPI at the 70% COLA, the first one is if the, if it was a repeating COLA or an annual ad hoc COLA, how would it impact a retiree making $20,000 a year? And then the next one is an ad hoc COLA at 70% at five-year and 10-year, and then the third one is an ad hoc COLA at 10-years. As you can see, when you get to the year 10, they're all, it's the same amount of money every year, it's just the annual payments are different because it's a retroactive COLA. And then I will turn it on over to Mr. Anthony Mills, so he can go ahead and explain a little bit more about the COLA, a little bit more in depth.
Okay. Mr. Mills.
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're unmuted. Can you turn up a little bit?
Absolutely, I hope that you can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So do you think I am Anthony Mills? I am the, I first got a promotion here within the last couple of days, and I'm getting used to my new title. I did call myself Senior Regional Manager, and I'm now Director of Big Services. And this afternoon, I was spending just a few minutes talking with you about COLA provision that you heard Monica address just a moment ago. I have had conversations with Monica, and I'll say that she does have a really good grasp of the cost of living adjustment provision. One of the items that she mentioned that I would like to reiterate, that I'd like to make sure that everybody understands about the cost of living adjustment, is that it does have a retroactive feature in it. And that is that it's always looking back, whenever the city chooses to adopt a COLA, if you don't adopt it on a one-time basis, it is always looking back retroactively to figure out how long has it been since the city has adopted a cost of living adjustment? And that retroactive piece of it is always gonna look at the actual change in its inflation, each of those years where the COLA has not been adopted, to figure out what the new benefits will do for the member who is receiving a cost of living adjustment after the city has made that adoption. The cost of living adjustment, as you've already heard, the city can adopt it on a one-time ad hoc basis. You also have the option to adopt it on a recurring or repeating ordinance, where it's an automatic rollover to each calendar year. Of course, if the council were to ever adopt a repeating COLA, that does not take away the, any future council's ability to turn off that repeat. They would reduce the percentage of the cost of living adjustment. You have the option to adopt 70% of the change in inflation, 50% of the change in inflation, or 30% of the change in inflation. Any future council could adopt any of those levels or turn the COLA altogether, should the city choose to adopt a repeating or recurring feature on the COLA. One other item that I'd like to mention to you about adopting a cost of living adjustment, and it's an important one. If the city is choosing to adopt a recurring cost of living adjustment, it is something that you need to understand that not only are you advance funding the cost of future COLAs for your members who have already retired from the city of Stehenville, but you would also be advance funding the cost of future COLAs for the active employees who will eventually qualify for retirement benefit from the city. Just as you are advance funding the cost of a base annuity benefit, their base retirement benefit, you would be advance funding the cost of those future COLAs as well. And that is one of the reasons that when we transparently show you what those real liabilities look like, that's one of the reasons that you'll see, whenever you look at the repeating version of the cost of living adjustment, it adds quite a bit, it's a bit more dynamic to the bottom line in your financials. Now, speaking of bottom line, on financials, one of the other items that you know, and Monica is aware of this, if you were to adopt an ad hoc one-time COLA, that would catch everyone of who has not received a COLA before. But it would not make any provisions for you to pay toward any future COLAs that you may adopt. Now, something that the city would choose to do, you know that you may come back and routinely adopt a cost of living adjustment on a one-time basis, you could pay more than the minimum rate that is required in the TMRS, so that you're already putting money aside, even though it's not the requirement for you to pay that into the system. But because you know with some regularity that you may adopt that cost of living adjustment, that would be some strategy that you could use to advance fund what you would expect a future council to adopt, but you certainly would not be required. In some of our cities who have made plan changes, not necessarily a COLA plan change, but some of our cities that have made plan changes before, they know that those plan changes are coming in the future and will keep the rate higher than they are actually required to pay in. In that way, they are in effect doing some advance funding. But systematically, the system will automatically, if the city adopts it on a repeating ordinance, you're automatically doing that. And the other item that I did wanna mention about that ad hoc COLA, the one-time COLA, if you do it with such frequency where you adopt it more than twice with, or twice within a five-year period, then on your financial statement, you would have to disclose that as if it is an automatic repeating cost of living adjustment. You would show that in your financials as if you're gonna adopt that, that cost of living adjustment. So those were some of the items that I did wanna mention to you before going to any of the documents that we have sent over to you this afternoon. And because I don't necessarily know the order in which your documents have, have been presented to you, I did want to make sure that, that I pulled the same document up, so you might have to give me the title if you want to refer to any specific documents. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for specific questions that you got.
Any questions?
Is this just for the committee, Mr. Chair?
I, I think while we've got him, it's probably appropriate to let anybody ask questions.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think while we've got him, it would probably be appropriate to open it up and let anybody ask.
Okay. Mr. Mills, if, if we elected to do an ad hoc, as long as we do it in less than, at once or less, or not any more than once in five years, it doesn't impact us long-term, it's just that one-time expense, correct?
That is correct. You are not required to show it on the financial statement, other than things that it gives to your liabilities in plan, and that is disclosed in that plan change study. There are several columns of different plan changes in that horizontal document. I believe one that has the number four.
Yes, page four.
That would show you the different types of plan designs, and you'll notice in the annuity increase plan, that is the cost of living adjustment. Whatever you see that change, whether, if you don't see anything of, if you see repeating, that's recurring, that's a repeating ordinance. Don't see anything, it's a one-time ad hoc. Those changes, you can see how it affects the financials.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I will tell you, if I might add, that conversations around the cost of living adjustment, one of the items that I, I would like to make sure that, that we are real clear about, let me be explicit, the, the cost of living adjustment, when you look at the cost of the repeating ordinance, and once upon a time, the city of Stehenville did have a repeating ordinance, the real cost of it is making sure that you are advance funding those future COLAs for the generation of current retirees and future retirees. That's where the real cost is. And one of the items that I would like for you to also recognize is that TMRS, a city has its liabilities amortized over no more than a 25-year schedule. If you were to make a plan change, you'll be on a 20-year amortization schedule. For everything that you're catching up on the tape or what you have not already amortized, by the time you get to the end of that amortization schedule, you would notice that in the plan change study that, that page four, I believe in the packet, there is what we call the prior service cost, and then there's the normal cost. And when you look at those prior service rates, you would notice that a 70% repeating COLA has a prior service rate of 5.07%. Well, if you were to follow that all the way to the end, you would find that the rate would fall back down somewhere closer to that 9.72, once you got to the end of that amortization schedule. Because much of that prior service rate would be the cost of those COLAs over that generation. I hope that makes sense.
Along those lines, under the contribution rates of, on, on page four, it has unfunded actuarial liability. Current, which is a negative of 1,233,000, all the way to, on the fourth position there, I guess it is, which is the 70%, 6,422,000.
Right.
Which would be, now, would you kind of explain that one more time?
Okay. Under your current plan, when you look at it, it just shows you that you're a 6% deposit plan, all employees are paying in a 6%, 2-1 back, 100% updated service credit. The plan is as it is today.
Yeah.
You're, you're overfunded by about 1.2 million dollars. So you've got a funded ratio, when you look at the difference between your assets and liabilities, you've got a funded ratio right at about 103%. 103%, you've got about 3% more in the account than you'd ever pay out in benefits, based on the current plan design. But then when you start to follow those proposed plans across one, two, three, and four, what you start to see is that if you make plan changes, you start to eat into that overage, the minus is an overage, that overage you start to eat into, all right? Until you get out to plan three, those repeating ordinances, that is where you start to see that you create an unfunded, a true unfunded actuarial liability. Prior to that, you've got an overfunded actuarial liability. That 1.6 would be a 30% repeating COLA. That 1.6 million is amortized over that 20-year amortization schedule. And by the time you get to the end, you would be back at about 8.49%. That would be your rate. And then the final column would be the one that would be the most costly, and that's that 70% repeating. You can see it gives you an unfunded liability of about 1.64 million. And over the 20-year schedule, you would wind that down to zero. And that would take your rate back down from 15.09, back down to about 9.72 plus the 1.26 over the supplemental debt.
So, I believe we were on the 70% repeating when it was repealed, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so is this unfunded, and I know it was repealed because there was such a large unfunded liability, is that a result of it not being properly funded when it was at some point along the way?
It's not so much that it wasn't properly funded. We did, once upon a time in our history, we used a different actuarial funding methodology, where each year, we would reset the cost of living adjustment, and the way that it would reset, by using what at that time we had was what we called the unit credit methodology, when looking at the cost of your liabilities, the different plan provisions that you got in your plan, the cost of living adjustment. It was looking one year at a time at what the real liabilities are, and then it would reset it each year. But what happened is, we changed that to the projected unit credit method, and when we did that, for cities like Stehenville, where you start to see the ratio between your active employees to retirees, when that narrows enough, that started to increase the rate for some of our cities. The rate increased, and the liability also increased, but we had placed it on a fixed amortization schedule. When we originally made the changes back in 2008, we were on a 30-year schedule, then we ratcheted it down to 25-year schedule, and then we're now at a 20-year schedule. The more, the shorter that amortization schedule is, that's the more aggressive the system is being in having the city pay down those liabilities. The 20-year just went into effect, it's taken effect in 2021, so that's brand new. When talking about what you had in place before, it was that projected unit credit methodology, and it reset each year, so those liabilities, those that amortization schedule, it increased that rate, because you had a fixed window of time to pay down that liability instead of going in and resetting it each year. So the question was, was it not properly funded? We think that the way that we had it now under the entry-age normal methodology, where it goes really over the course of an employee's career, that is a more appropriate way to, to go about it. It's much more optimal for that type of benefit.
As I toggle between two pages here, number four and number 10, am, am I reading this correctly? Since we were talking about the 70% before, and if we go back to the 70%, we're going to incur a $6.4 million liability to the city's financing. And if I go back to page 10, and I look at the 70% COLA, and figuring that somebody is getting a $20,000 retirement, and the increase would be $280 a year, or about $20 a month, am I correct?
Well, that's just in this example.
Well, I know, but it's an example.
Yes, it, it's based on a, a 2% inflation factor with a 70% COLA, yes, you're correct, it's $280 a year.
So about $20 a month, a little over.
Roughly.
$20 a month, and we would incur a $6.4 million liability for that? Is that correct?
Prefunding the existing employees too.
Yes.
Okay.
And councilman, part, part of what you're also looking at, when you look at that total liability, is the cost of that COLA adding to that benefit. While it may not seem like a lot in one year, what you're looking at is the entire.
20-year period.
You're looking at that, that period that you, that you've caught up, but you're also looking at the life expectancy of that retiree, and the future retirees. Those active employees who have not yet retired, more to look at when they do retire, if they retire at 15, 17, 16 years old, live for another 25, 30 years, what that additional benefit will look like from the point that they retire. And if you have it on a repeating ordinance, we're also accounting for the assumption in inflation being 2.5% per year, for each year, that they continue to live and grow benefit. And that's why it moves, it's, it is the one that's going to be the, the most costly.
Does it stop when a retiree passes? Or does the retiree, can they designate another individual to take, to continue at least part of the payments, if not all of the payments?
The benefit itself, whether it have a cost of living adjustment or not, your retirees from Stehenville, they have the option to leave a survivor benefit. And inside those projections, whether related to co, to the cost of living adjustment or any of the other benefits, we've already accounted for the fact that we may look at not just the retiree's lifetime, but a survivor's remaining life expectancy as well. That's already.
Is that survivor always a spouse, or can it be a child, or what? Anybody?
It, it does not have to be a spouse, it can be a child, it can be non-relational. They, they can name someone other than a spouse as, as a beneficiary, as long as they get a spouse's consent and no threats.
Okay.
Can you please articulate the methodology that you switched to 12 years ago, one more time? Or the, what was the one before, and then what's the one currently?
The original methodology that we had was the unit credit method. And the unit credit method, the reason that the system had in place the unit credit methodology is it works best for a plan like TMRS, where we are cash balance plan. We're not a fixed, pure defined benefit plan, and those of you may be familiar with some of the other statewide systems. For instance, folks who live in your county, who have worked and paid into the state, VPS or a, a teacher there, or somebody who works at one of the colleges or universities, they pay into the teacher's system, and they get a fixed benefit. The unit credit methodology doesn't necessarily work as well for that type of system, but the unit credit method does work well for a plan like ours, where the benefit is kind of a pay-as-you-do. We have a good idea, based on the amount of dollars that you have in your account, what your benefit will be when you finally retire. And that unit credit methodology works well for that plan, and that is our base plan. The difference is, over the years in TMRS, we added some provisions, including a cost of living adjustment and the updated service credits. Those particular ordinances, cities have in place, and some of the cities, most of the cities who have it, have it on a repeating ordinance. And what happened is, in some of our more major metropolitan areas, some of those smaller towns, who are not growing nearly as fast as they did once upon a time in their history in TMRS, think of cities like Garland, Carrollton, they were somewhat landlocked in major metropolitan areas. Or think of now, actually, East Texas cities, Longview, Tyler, Marshall, although they're, they're growing quite a bit these days, but they did not, they didn't grow the city workforce as, as rapidly as they did their retirees. They started to add more retirees than they were acting before either. And when that.
Where you start to see that you create an unfunded, a true unfunded actuarial liability. Prior to that, you've got an overfunded actuarial liability. That 1.6 would be a 30% repeating COLA. That 1.6 million is amortized over that 20-year amortization schedule. And by the time you get to the end, you would be back at about 8.49%. That would be your rate. And then the final column would be the one that would be the most costly. And that's that 70% repeating. You can see it gives you an unfunded liability of about 1.64 million. And over the 20-year schedule, you would line that down to zero. And that would take your rate back down from 15.09, uh, back down to about 9.72 plus the 1.26 for the supplemental debt benefit.
So I believe we were on the 70% repeating when it was repealed, is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Thanks.
So, so is this unfunded, and I know it was repealed because there was such a large unfunded liability, is that a result of it not being properly funded when it was at some point along the way?
It's not so much that it wasn't properly funded. We did, once upon a time in our history, we used a different actuarial funding methodology, where each year, we would reset the cost of living adjustment. And the way that it would reset by using what at that time we had was what we called the unit credit methodology, when looking at the cost of your liabilities, the different plan provisions that you got in your plan, the cost of living adjustment. It was looking one year at a time at what the real liabilities are. And then it would reset each year. But what happened is we changed that to the projected unit credit method. And when we did that, for cities like Steenfield, where you start to see the ratio between your active employees to retirees, when that narrows enough, that started to increase the rates for some of our cities. The rate increased, and the liability also increased, but we had placed it on a fixed amortization schedule. When we originally made the changes back in 2008, we were on a 30-year schedule, then we ratcheted it down to 25-year schedule, and then we're now at a 20-year schedule. The more, the shorter that amortization schedule is, that's the more aggressive the system is being in having the city pay down those liabilities. The 20-year just went into effect. It's taken effect in 2021, so that's brand new. When talking about what you had in place before, it was that projected unit credit methodology, and it reset each year, so those liabilities, those that amortization schedule, it increased that rate, because you had a fixed window of time to pay down that liability instead of going in and resetting it each year. So the question was, was it not properly funded? We think that the way that we had it now under the entry-age normal methodology, where it goes really over the course of an employee's career, that is a more appropriate way to, to go about it. It's much more optimal for that type of benefit.
As I toggle between two pages here, number four and number 10, am I reading this correctly? Since we were talking about the 70% before, and if we go back to the 70%, uh, we're going to incur a $6.4 million liability to the city's financing. And if I go back to page 10, and I look at the 70% COLA, and figuring that somebody is getting a $20,000 retirement, and the increase would be $280 a year, or about $20 a month, am I correct?
Well, that's just in this example.
Well, I know, but it's an example.
Yes, it, it, it's based on a, a 2% inflation factor with a 70% COLA. Yes, you're correct, it's $280 a year.
So about $20 a month, a little over.
Roughly.
$20 a month, and we would incur a $6.4 million liability for that? Is that correct?
Prefunding the existing employees too.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And councilman, part, part of what you're also looking at, when you look at that total liability, is the cost of that COLA adding to that benefit. While it may not seem like a lot in one year, what you're looking at is the entire.
20-year period.
You're looking at that, that period that you, that you've caught up. But you're also looking at the life expectancy of that retiree and the future retirees, those active employees who have not yet retired, more to look at when they do retire, if they retire at 15, 17, 16 years old, live for another 25, 30 years, what that additional benefit will look like from the point that they retire. And if you have it on a repeating ordinance, we're also accounting for the assumption in inflation being 2.5% per year, for each year, that they continue to live and grow benefit. And that's why it moves, it's, it is the one that's going to be the, the most costly.
Does it stop when a retiree passes? Or does the retiree, can they, um, designate, uh, another individual to take, to continue, uh, at least part of the payments, if not all of the payments?
The benefit itself, whether it have a cost of living adjustment or not, um, your retirees from Steenfield, they have the option to leave a survivor benefit. And inside those projections, whether related to co, to the cost of living adjustment or any of the other benefits, we've already accounted for the fact that we may look at not just the retiree's lifetime, but a survivor's remaining life expectancy as well. That's already.
Is that survivor always a spouse, or can it be a child, or what? Anybody?
It, it does not have to be a spouse, it can be, uh, a spouse, it can be non-relational. Um, they, they can name someone other than a spouse as, as a beneficiary, as long as they get a spouse's consent and no threats.
Okay.
Can you please, um, articulate the methodology that you switched to 12 years ago? One more time. Or the, what was the one before, and then what's the one currently?
The original methodology that we had was the unit credit method. And the unit credit method, the reason that the system had in place the unit credit methodology is it works best for a plan like TMRS, where we are cash balance plan. We're not a fixed, pure defined benefit plan. Those of you may be familiar with some of the other statewide systems, uh, for instance, uh, folks who live in your county who have worked and paid into the state, VPS or, um, a, a teacher there, or somebody who works at one of the colleges or universities, they pay into the teacher's system and they get a fixed benefit. The unit credit methodology doesn't necessarily work as well for that type of system, but the unit credit method does work well for a plan like ours, where the benefit is kind of a pay-as-you-do. We have a good idea, based on the amount of dollars that you have in your account, what your benefit will be when you finally retire. And that unit credit methodology works well for that plan, and that is our base plan. The difference is, over the years in TMRS, we added some provisions, including a cost of living adjustment and the updated service credits. Those particular ordinances, cities have in place, and some of the cities, most of the cities who have it, have it on a repeating ordinance. And what happened is, in some of our more major metropolitan areas, some of those smaller towns, who are not growing nearly as fast as they did once upon a time in their history in TMRS, think of cities like Garland, um, Carrollton, they were somewhat landlocked in major metropolitan areas. Or think of now, actually, East Texas cities, Longview, Tyler, Marshall, although they're, they're growing quite a bit these days, but they did not, they, they didn't grow the city workforce as, as rapidly as they did their retirees. They started to add more retirees than they were active before either. And when that particular, the cost of living adjustment, you know, thanks retirees, when more cities started to get more retirees than they did active employees, where income comes into the system, the benefit going out continued to increase, which continued to increase the liabilities for the plan. And so the funded ratio was decreasing, while the, and the folks who were only looking a year at a time at those cost of living adjustments, under the unit credit method, those liabilities continued to increase while the funded ratio decreased. So that was not the direction we wanted to go, which is why we moved to the projected unit credit method. And then finally, we moved in 2015, I believe it was, to the entry-age normal methodology. And that's looking at the course of a career to, and to, the full benefit.
Monica?
Yes.
About how many people do we have on the retirement, that are drawing retirement, city retirement now?
I think it's about 111, I'm thinking.
Hundred?
That is about right. I can tell you exactly as of the last evaluation, uh, Steenfield had, I need my glasses on. Um, Steenfield had 156 active employees and 101 retirees as of the last evaluation.
101.
Does a city like Steenfield, does it make the most sense for the entry-age normal methodology?
It does, it does. Whether you have a cost of living adjustment in place, um, it makes sense for the city to have that entry-age normal methodology, because what it does, it is really the most aggressive of all the, the actuarial accounting methods, to make sure that the benefit is funded by the end of the career of the active employee. So a brand-new employee who comes in, and you all had the repeating COLA in place, what the entry-age normal methodology will do is value that employee based on the age at which he comes into the system, and when we expect him to retire from the system, and how long we expect him to grow the benefit, that entry-age normal methodology is having you pay for that benefit over the course of his career, however long that may be.
What happens to the assets if an individual rolls their own portion of their funds out of the plan? What happens to the city's contributions?
Okay, all of the contributions that the city makes, you make on behalf of the pool of, of Steenfield active employees, inactive employees, and retirees. Any employee who terminates his employment with the city and chooses to refund his account is only getting his money in interest.
Right.
He does not get any of the city's matching dollars. Those stay on account and become an actuarial gain for the city.
Which is why we are not currently paying 12% at our 2 to 1, we're paying less than that.
That's right. If you look at your actuarially determined rate, uh, you will notice that you are well beneath the, what would be a, a 2 to 1 match for your plan. You're paying in less than that, because it's an actuarially determined rate.
Looking at these, uh, projections, so if you just look at the, I don't know what page it'll be for you, but the 30% ad hoc, just the one, one-time ad hoc. Do I understand that within the next eight years, that one adjustment in eight years from now will cost the city an additional $200,000 per year? The cost, the cost to the city, for 2020 would be 612, and 2028, 813. So that one-time adjustment, the liability eight years from now will be an additional $200,000 per year still?
I want to make sure that I'm looking at, okay. In 2021, are we looking from, from 612,000 in estimated contributions to 685,000? Is that what we're looking at?
Uh, no, looking at, I'm looking all the way out to 2028.
I got you. Okay, yes, that is that one-time ad hoc. Now, the, I would pay more attention to the percentage on these, because what we're also accounting for is what we project your payroll to look like between now and 2028.
Okay.
So it's not so much the dollar amount as it is the headcount and the salary that we project to be in place by 2028.
Okay. So that, that 200,000 is not all from the ad hoc adjustment? That's.
No, it's not.
That's projection growth of employment as well?
That right.
Okay.
How does it go down?
A better indicator would be that, that plan projection study under the 30%, you can look there and see what it does to.
Ties back to what?
To be applied to these, it takes from, yeah, it, 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 it takes it to that 1.6, which, if you're talking about repeating, um, the one-time ad hoc takes it from 1.2 down to 1 million. So yeah, about $200,000 on the liability in. It's less than 200,000, but you go from 1.2 to 1 million.
Anybody else have any questions? Just gonna make sure he's good.
I do know that it is a conversation that has been had there in Steenfield. Monica has asked a lot of really good questions of TMRS to try and understand it, and I have made clear that we'll do whatever we can as a resource, and you all continue to deliberate what is, for Steenfield's plan. If you think of any other questions after today, of course, let her know, and she certainly knows how to reach me, and I do more than that to assist you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you, uh, taking the time out of your evening to meet with us.
My pleasure.
Anybody else? Mr. Nix?
This is probably not a, a question for you, but it may be, if, if we as a city determined that we wanted to do something for our retired employees, are there any options for us to do that outside of the TMRS structure that, that we've discussed here this evening?
That is a good question. Um, and you would think that, I would have heard that before.
Anthony, I did ask that question from, I believe her name was Lauren, is she one of your actuarial department?
Uh, Leslie.
Leslie, thank you, yes. I did ask that question to Leslie, and she said, no, the law prohibits, prohibits it because of, uh, it ends up being considered, uh, you're paying somebody for services not rendered, uh, like a anti-contribution, anti-donation.
Thank you. I, I've never been asked that question. It's, it's a good question, thank you.
Well, of course, my, my thought processes are, are trying to think about current and past employees, trying to, to provide as much benefit as possible to them, not only when they're employed, but during their retirement. And it's a shame that, that our options are so limited on what we can do without encumbering a significant amount of long-term debt and long-term expense for the city. And, and I understand that it is a long-term liability, that, that's the point of retirement, is, is to have a long-term benefit for those people that have labored for the city for so long. It's a shame that, that our hands are almost tied to the point that, that our options are extremely limited, or so it seems.
Well, I, I certainly can empathize with, with where you sit. Um, the, again, the option to adopt that one-time ad hoc COLA and to do it on a less routine basis, what it does is, after there have been a few years to go by, for instance, say you do adopt it once every five years, you get that, you would not have to show it on your financial statement as if it's subsequent or automatic, but you are catching up your retirees for those years that they did not get a cost of living adjustment. But then a future council, looking 10 years down the road, they want to adopt it again. Well, while it's not subsequently automatic, it's still doing the same thing, and it costs what it costs. I think Martha probably, she's very smart, and all unfortunate to have her.
We agree with Martha.
She asked a very good question, and, and that has to do with the retroactive calculation for the COLA. But for that retroactive calculation, if we didn't have that in place, then the city could adopt a COLA, and it would just be for that time, and that would be it. You wouldn't have to go back and fill in, and that could, for a case like Steenfield, because you've gone years without adopting it, it could make it more palatable and even possible in some cases. But under our current statute, that is not possible, because of the way that it's structured. So I, I do empathize with where you're at.
Well, that, thank you for your time and for the information, and, and for your patience. Uh, we're, we're trying to, to understand something that's not readily, or certainly not something that's easy for most of us to grasp, because we don't deal with this.
I get it, I absolutely get it.
Hey, Anthony, um, real quick, on the, on page four, the, uh, normal rate cost contribution rates under current, so that'll be effective in January of 2021, the 7.57.
7.57, yeah.
Does, on page six of my handout is the 70% ad hoc, in 2021, the rate is 8.23. Does that reflect the new calculation that TMRS is now using? Or is that, is that the old number under the old system?
No, no, everything, all of it's taken into account, what we, what we use today.
The only reason I ask is the full rate doesn't match, 2021 is a different number than what we're paying currently, so I just was curious.
And that is because it doesn't include the supplemental debt benefit, the 1.26. If 1.26 is added in, hopefully it's adding up.
If you look here, this 8.23 matches the 8.23 here.
And that's where that's coming from?
Yes.
It's just the retirement rate.
All right. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Nix, you're good? All right, Anthony, thanks again for taking the time to meet with us, we really appreciate it.
Absolutely, this is my pleasure.
Uh, that's not an action item on the agenda, just discussion, so at this time, we'll adjourn the personnel committee.
At this point, I'll turn over to Gerald Cook to start the nominations committee, and some of us will be leaving, so Mr. Cook will be the one who adjourns the meeting at the end. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of. Coming up, it is our responsibility to come up with a, the nominating committee, to start the discussion and start, uh, the process of our legislative agenda. We haven't really done that in times past that I'm aware of, but we're charged with that responsibility of doing it this time around. There is, which Stacy has, uh, God and Jason, actually, uh, has gone on, uh, online, basically downloaded the, uh, the positions, legislative positions for the, for TML. Uh, there are so many of them, frankly, and, and frankly, kind of, some of them are poorly written, too. Uh, they've got 28 different stands, that they're on the positive side, and a whole ton of ones that they're opposed to. My thought is that, uh, we rely on not only staff input, I've got the input from the mayor, but I would hope that, uh, come our next council meeting, that I, with your agreement, will ask all the council members, maybe between now and then, to, uh, to provide some input on this, and we start putting this together. I expect it'll take us about two to three meetings to do so. Our goal would try to be to get something in place by October. I think prefile is what, November, thereabouts?
Yes.
For bills and whatnot. Uh, to be a good, having gone through the process somewhat like this, uh, to, to have a good legislative agenda for an organization, a council, and whatnot, we've got to limit of the numbers, 28 is not going to cut it. We've got to limit our, uh, and, and look at what are those key things that, that are most important, uh, to the city of Steenfield? And how, uh, then how we can, can we, uh, effectively look at those? It's also better for it to be on the positive side rather than the opposition side, if you get my drift. Uh, I mean, that's just the way it works. Uh, ideally, when we go down to, uh, the legislature, you want to be able to have a sheet of paper in your hand, uh, with one issue or with your five issues or thereabouts, and say, hmm, this is what we stand for, this is what we're looking for. And when we're visiting with our representatives particularly, uh, that's going to be quite important. We've got to keep our agenda fairly, fairly short. Uh, there have been six things suggested so far. One is our tax, uh, issues with regard to appraisals, uh, to clean it up, you know, right now, we were in the, we, we got, um, added to the groups, uh, cities under 30,000 and whatnot, but there's a lot of questions about that. So that's one to, for you to note. And I'll try to get this to you, by the way, and send you these things, and look at the flexibility that goes along with this. And, uh, two, to, uh, looking at the state oversight, uh, it's been mentioned that TCEQ is, uh, the one state agency that is creating a lot of hassle, uh, right now, and so, uh, could be a, a problem, uh, for us. I, I don't know how much of a problem that is. The state and federal unfunded mandates, it seems to continually come down for us, is something that we have to look at, federal rules, state rules. Uh, and a limitation on unfunded mandates, uh, is an issue that is probably, uh, would be fairly popular among all the cities. And we may have some, uh, certainly might have in, uh, this timeframe, uh, some help with that. Also, I believe we've checked, and Todd Smith is willing to help on that particular issue. Um, the, it has been mentioned, I'm, you're hearing it there, there has been quite a lot of dollars come through on the COVID relief from the fads, the state is holding, and everything like that, uh, perhaps, uh, releasing some of those dollars to the cities to use would be a good thing. Uh, so that would be number four on the list to, to think about and to talk about. I'm not suggesting we do all these things, I'm suggesting that we need to, these are things we need to visit about. Uh, we always have streets, water and sewer issues, uh, there, and how do we fund those type of things? Uh, and we use our fees.
Right.
On this, uh, it's one. on this, that's why we have sewer rates, water rates, and so forth. But are there other things? How to do, how do we do the streets and roads, and whether that is, uh, an adjustment, something from the state, or we look at some other financing package that doesn't let us do that at the present time? The other thing we've talked about is, uh, the possibility, and, and anytime you talk about taxes, it's not a real pleasant thing for, for most people and for cities in general, but frankly, that's how, that's what funds cities. And you have two sources primarily of income. You have property taxes, ad form taxes, you have sales taxes. That's the two big things. You're limited on both of them now, which is, you know, it's been the legislative agenda that's, was proved, that put the caps, frankly, and, and in a way, we've gone through that here tonight and, and over the budgeting process. Uh, we have state caps with regard to sales tax, uh, too. But in most states and cities across the country, the sales tax seems to be a little bit more for easier sale than property tax increases. Particularly if the sales taxes could combine to reduce some property taxes and to achieve greater dollars. And now, where it really comes in handy is if you're a, a more of a retail center for a wide area, which we are, and we hope will be more so in the future, then sales taxes coming from outside the county are coming in to help you fund your city, frankly. That's the way it works. But there are caps on the sales taxes, you know, right now. And, uh, so then do you look and you try to do a, uh, as the legislature?
For?
Cities, to be able to go for specific items, whether that is a particular road, whether it is a particular, um, capital improvement or something, for a voter-approved sales tax issue. And, uh, to allow that to happen, whether quarter cent or half cent or whatever it is. And so that is the other option out there, rest to look at, I believe, at this stage. I wanted to, rest to kind of, uh, tonight, just discuss a little bit and everything, and, and open the door, if you will, uh, for this group, because it's going to be, uh, the next meeting and the meeting following that, is, uh, we're going to try to hammer this down into the, to a final, um, picture of, of maybe five or six or seven different issues that we will present, uh, to the council as a recommendation. So that's where I'm at. And, uh, and we're just kind of starting the process. Uh, your thoughts? Does it sound like a good plan? I mean, a good way of starting this thing, you know?
It, it sounds like a reasonable way to try to, to put it together, and I agree. You know, some for three to five is probably going to be the maximum number that you're going to be, that you could hope to be efficient with.
Right.
It's been the legislature's position in the past, they're not very positive about any kind of new tax.
Right.
I wish your sales tax would be. I don't know if there might be a way to, to do some kind of a property tax averaging or equalization or something like that, that, that wouldn't hamstring some cities and benefit others. I, I don't know if that would be a possibility or not, but that wouldn't necessarily be a new tax. Some people would really go for that, and some, some cities would not. So that, that's another avenue that you might want to pursue, but the other things that you had there are, are all worthy things, seems to me like.
Yeah. I'd had some, one of the reasons I mentioned the sales tax is I've had some experience with that, in that, uh, in another state that I was in, the city I was in, we used, uh, sales tax to voters to do specific projects, uh, and they had sunset provisions on each one of those sales taxes. And, uh, they would last for one year or two years, you know, at the extreme. I think we, uh, we did a jail for, I forgot how many, a jillion's anyway, and, uh, the sales tax lasted about for three years on it, for half cent or something like that. But, uh, uh, but they all sunsetted afterward. Now, then the voters, uh, if another project came up, well, then they could decide to add to it. But the, the cap that the legislature, the state legislature did, allowed for enough space in there, uh, that you could go to a citizen-voted, uh, sales tax increase for a specific issue like that. And we chose to do, uh, sunset provisions because frankly, it's a selling point that you can. You know that the first one was the hardest one to do, because people didn't really believe that sales tax would actually go off. But it did. And, uh, and then you, then, uh, a year or so later, we came in with another, you know, for a specific project. So those kind of things tended to work, and, and we tended to, uh, most of the voters approved those things in the, in the neighborhood of anywhere from 60 to 75% voter approval on the sales tax issues like that. And, uh, so, anyway, those were good.
I, I think we've definitely got to think outside the box and, and present some ideas on new ways of funding, because, um, it seems pretty clear that, that at least new candidates coming into the state legislature this year are, are hot and heavy on property taxes again.
Yes, they are. They really are.
And, uh, um, you know, the, that's unfortunate for cities like Stevensville.
Yeah.
Who have been good stewards and continue to have a relatively low rate, uh, compared to so many others. There's certainly some cities that, that they need to be wrangled. I actually just looked yesterday at, at Senate District 30, and, uh, City of Stevensville is in the bottom 27%.
Yeah.
On the tax rate.
Exactly.
Um, and I think that's the story we need to be telling, is, you know, whatever solution you come up with, it can't, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It can't be.
That's right.
And, uh, you know, just a, a cap, a cap on a city like, on a city like Stevensville, who's already, who has already been very conservative, um, can be more damaging long-term than, than, than some that probably do need a cap.
That's right.
Uh, and I think that's the, the message we need to send, is just whatever, whatever you do, there needs to be some provisions for those cities that have been responsible.
Well, some of the things we're, we've been talking about, the fact of, of capital improvements and, I mean, road and street repairs, and, uh, and resurfacing, things like that, these things cost so much money to do. We've talked about Long Street, we've talked about Graham Street, we've talked about Washington, well, not Washington Street, but all the other street. And, uh, uh, where's the money going to come from? We're putting aside, what is it, about a million dollars a year right now, a million and a half or something like that, I think, this coming year? Is that not right, Monica?
It's about a million.
And, uh, for, uh, street improvements, and we need to be putting in two million or three million for street improvements, just to stay up with the plan that we have put together.
Just to maintain that.
To maintain it, maintain it, not build new, I mean, maintain it and everything. So I think we've, it's incumbent upon us to, uh, to, uh, put together the process and the plan of how we're going to do this in the future. Part of that is the process of legislative approval and legislative, uh, action here, too. And that's, this is a piece, piece of the pie. We've got to have the ability to do that and keep our options open, and that's what this is all about. Okay? All right. Any, any other things for you guys?
Are you going to send that list?
I will send you out this list, as a matter of fact, and, uh, and everything. Stacy is working on another list for us, and, uh, it will also come before us here, before the end of the year, of course. Actually, I think it's by November, isn't it, Stacy?
There it is.
Uh, we have, uh, as a nominating committee, our job is to select people for boards and commissions.
Mm-hmm.
Now, uh, we, uh, that's, so that's coming up. One of the things that Stacy is putting together for us, I thought would be very helpful, is, uh, when some of our volunteers were actually named to those boards and commissions, uh, and how long they've served. Now, we're supposed to be on a term limits, but I think the term limits all started now, like right 2019 or something like that?
Correct. I think those amendments in 2018, so they became effective starting 2019.
Yeah. But we've got some people that have served for the last 15 years. And, uh, so we need to look at that. We need to look at that. And, uh, and, and see kind of what's effective, what's not effective, and, uh, what we've got available to us, too. Because some people, yeah, I think the letters have gone out, we don't know how many are going to say that they'd like to continue, and how many are ready to leave. So, anyway, whatever, it's our job to, to replace them. Okay? Anything else from you guys?
No, sir.
Uh, then, uh, we will call this meeting adjourned. We will get back together again, by the way.